Okay. Call to order, the special meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Wednesday, December 11th, 2013, 9:00 a.m. I would like to wish everybody happy holidays. And if I could have a roll call, please.
Director Fleischer?
Here.
Director Hunt?
Here.
President Corolla?
Here.
Director Kellogg? Director Kellogg Givaudin at this time? And Vice President Duncan?
Here.
Thank you, Georgiana. Election and appointment of officers for 2014. First one is election of a new president, and...
At this point, you turn the meeting over to me.
Exactly.
George takes control.
Okay. Okay, now I'll have control. Let me enjoy it for a moment, okay. I'll entertain a motion for President.
I nominate Larry Duncan for President.
A second.
No, you think I close nominations?
Yeah, we're gonna close nominations. Do you want me to wait for bills here? You want me to wait for him before I close nominations?
Sure, sure.
Yes, please.
He's here.
Darn, that means no extra candy.
Give power a little longer.
Let's hide it. Doug's hid his under the hat.
What? Your candy.
I'd like to take it off in here during the meeting, well.
Well, now I got my wife's Christmas present.
There you go.
Regifter. Regifter, yeah, he's a regifter, yeah.
She's getting two this year, one from Bay and one from Tri-County.
Gonna give her the calendar?
She's already looked at it.
Where did big get his candy from? Does it say?
I don't know, where did it say?
Russell Snowden or something.
It's a big name. It's a big name, yeah.
I don't know it.
You said it didn't taste that good.
Did I miss getting my candy from them?
From who?
From Dan?
Russell Stover.
Was that Dan?
Yeah. You have to attend the brunching to get it.
He had to go to his brunch. He might only invited the finance committee.
Smart boy.
Hi, Bill.
Hi.
We have opened the nominations for the position of President. There's been a motion and a second for Larry Duncan to serve as President for the 2014 year, and I'll entertain either a motion to close the nominations or a motion for an additional candidate.
I move that we close nominations.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to close nominations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nominations are now closed. All those in favor of Director Duncan as President for 2014, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries, and I now turn the meeting over to President Duncan.
Okay. I open the floor for nominations for Vice President for 2014.
I will nominate Ken Hunt as Vice President.
I'll second it.
I'll nominate Doug Fleischer.
I'll second it.
I move nominations be closed.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, seeing none, okay, going on the order of the nominations. All those in favor of the nomination for Vice President of Ken Hunt for 2014, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Did you say aye?
No, I didn't say aye.
Okay, so you...
I don't say no.
Okay, so, did you say aye?
I didn't say anything.
You didn't say anything, okay.
I'm gonna abstain.
You're gonna abstain, okay. So it passes three, one with one abstention. So since he passes, then it's over. We don't go on to the second nomination. Okay, the next appointment is for Treasurer and Secretary, and that can be in one motion if you wish to do so.
I'll nominate Kevin Phillips for Treasurer.
Let's switch them.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Georgiana, Georgiana for Treasurer.
I did not want Georgiana.
And Georgiana for Secretary.
I'll second it. Move nominations close?
Second.
All those in favor of nominations close, say aye.
Aye.
Well, are these really elections, or are they just appointments?
They're appointments. Okay, all those in favor of appointing Georgiana Barara, Bararo, and Kevin Phillips to Secretary and Treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five oh. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent calendar to talk about by itself? Yes, I would like to remove the agenda, the regular minutes of the November meeting. The regular minutes, okay. Anybody else?
I move approval of the consent calendar as modified.
I'll second.
Seconded, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Anything from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you say aye?
Yes.
Okay, five ayes, it passes with one modification. Okay, let's do the modification right now. Approval of the minutes. Yes, bring up page iPad 21. Please. Okay, second paragraph, I just wanted to bring this out on this, I have no problem with the wording or what it is on here, but I just wanted to clarify some stuff so that when we have our January 15th meeting, it just doesn't fall out of the sky at that particular time. The second paragraph said, "Director Fleischer indicated very comfortable with Treasurer Phillips as the new District Chief Financial Officer," and that's very true, in fact, I'm more comfortable now than I was when this was put in here. "And would vote no, would not, would not vote no on the employment agreement, even though he feels a six-month severance package is ample." Even before the Post editorial came out, I had quite a number of constituents. You see, I campaigned for this position, which apparently campaigning happens forever now, as far as PIV is concerned. And I didn't ask for anybody's opinion, they just gave it to me, that they feel that a year's severance is excessive, extremely excessive, out here. Some of them are very, walks, all walks of life in here, and I could go on and on and talk about several different things on this. And we're down here in the fourth paragraph, I guess it's the fourth paragraph, "The board will review this at the next regular board meeting, which will be January 15th," and I just wanted to bring this out now because of the fact that I didn't want to wait till the 15th to put it out. And I did say that I would not vote no, because I want him to be the next Chief Financial Officer of this district. However, after talking to many of my constituents or having them talk to me, which is our constituency I might add, and their feeling on the severance package, and this was before the editorial by the Post came out, so what I'm going to be doing on the 15th of January, I know that his package, as it says in the third paragraph here... Is this proper?
No.
It's not on the agenda. I think it's proper, because it...
You're not correcting anything.
You're not changing the minutes. No. That's all you can do right now. I'm clarifying the minutes, and it is very proper.
But that's what you said.
What? Okay, yeah, I know it is, but I'm clarifying what I meant by...
I don't think you can do that until January 15th.
You can request that that, after this point, be struck, and then it won't be in the record, and that would be perfectly fine.
Even though he did say it?
Even though he said it.
Yeah.
He can propose to strike that from the record, and that's fine, because...
Do we vote on that? Oh, that, we vote on that, then?
Then you would be approving the amended minutes.
But is it proper to amend minutes when it isn't real, when they aren't really be...
Being corrected?
Being corrected?
Seems like devious that we would say we're not gonna have something printed that was...
Yeah, but...
Said previously.
They're not word-for-word minutes.
That's correct.
They're action minutes, so I think it's appropriate if a director feels he doesn't want something on the record, that he have the ability to strike that, because these are just kinda giving a feel for...
Can he add his intention to the minutes?
No.
No, okay.
That would change. So maybe just...
So, yeah, save what you want to say till January 15th, but just ask for this to be removed from these minutes. Yes, I'd like to have that removed from the minutes, and I've discussed this with Kevin also. Okay, where, what do you want removed? It was assumed, and I know that I had put this across with President Corolla, and he asked me the question, and I said, "No, I would not vote no on him not being this Chief Financial Officer, Kevin's aware of this." But since I've talked to my constituents, I feel differently about this. And I can wait till the 15th to bring it out, so it really doesn't begin against me.
Yeah, right. So you'd like to... I think what he wants is striking from the comma after point, all the way to the end of that sentence.
Yeah, ample.
Turn that...
I feel comfortable with the rest. Yes, I like...
You're comfortable with him at this point, period.
Yep.
And then extend and...
Further commented.
Strike the rest of the sentence, okay. So make that motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we amend the minutes, as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. You did say aye. I didn't, you had your hand over your mouth, so I couldn't see.
Well, thank you.
Okay, now we need to, we changed the minutes, now you need to... I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, passes four oh. Okay, public participation. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda, although the board cannot take action on any matters not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. Anyone from the public wishes to speak about something that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. The first one is local agency formation commission, which is me. We met on the... Where's my minutes? I mean, my thing. I brought it in here. Oh, it's right in here. Thought I brought it in, oh, well, I didn't, okay. We met on the 5th, and we did some housekeeping and so forth, but our big issue right now is the 62 units that were, and that were hooked up to the sewers, and they are not in the city of Chico, and we're requesting nicely, but demanding that Chico do something about it, and they, it's gonna cost somewhere between $37,000 and $100,000 for them to do it, to give, pay for our fees to do it, and they offered $5,000 as a deposit, meaning that they don't want to pay any more than $5,000. I think they're sort of going on the deal that, do the thing without permission, and then ask forgiveness and don't have to pay for it. Now, the thing is, we don't have other entities, if you do that, there's a penalty that's a lot worse. We don't have that in our bylaws, so we don't have penalties, but we're sort of, we're sticking to it, and so we're saying that they've gotta do something. Fortunately, one of our new members is Tom Lander, and he used to be the manager of Chico, and he's in our favor. He's taking our side of it, and he knows a lot more about the city than we do. So, so, what it boils down to is, if they don't do it and we have to go to litigation, it's gonna cost them 100 times more than what it is now. So I hope him they'll do it, but see, they're, I understand, they haven't even taken it to the city council yet. Some of the city councilmen don't even know about it, and so I think they're trying to protect them from it or something, but anyway, but we're, but they are in violation of state law, and we're trying to do it. We did lower the fee from 1,500 to 600, and, and, but they don't even want to pay the 600 per hookup. But the problem is, is if they don't pay it, then other LAFCO members have to make it up, and that's not fair. Okay, and then we did, we did approve an annexation of another one in Chico. So they are doing it right now, but therefore, I don't know how long they did it wrong, but they did. And that was basically our whole meeting. Okay, Administration and Personnel Committee. Director Hunt wasn't there?
Hunt wasn't there, so I will refer to the person who was.
We'll have Corolla do it, then.
Okay, so I will point out, this is gonna be a future agenda item, and this is merely just a committee report for what we did talk about in there. So in regards to our billing penalties and the changes that we're proposing to make, staff has been looking at this problem, trying to arrive at some dates that are going to work for billing, for the cycles, all the things that have to go hand-in-hand with this, along with penalties being assessed and so forth. So we're looking at a specific date for billing, maybe the 15th and the 20th, I think that's pretty much in stone, but we'll see how that goes. The clock for the penalties will now start on the bill date, not the read date.
Now, that's on the agenda today. 9:00 a.m.
Remember, it was on the agenda so you could get feedback if you want.
Exact, well, okay.
And take no action.
So you don't have to give that to us now if you don't want to.
If you want to wait, I can do that.
Probably be better.
Okay, let's just wait.
You can discuss...
So we were there.
You can discuss that, that the travel, the travel policy was kind of foregone till Kim...
Foregone, because Ken had some input on it, yes, so, like Kevin just stated, the travel policy was left to a future date.
Correct.
So that Director Hunt could get a bagel and then put his input in.
My penalty? That's right.
Okay, we don't have a penalty for not showing up to committee meetings, do we?
That's the penalty, is use of high coffee and bagels for...
The following one, yes, he's been nominated already.
Okay, the next report is Water Conservation Committee, and Mr. Fleischer is the chairperson. We met yesterday, and I thought we had a very good meeting. We zeroed in on three main items. One of them is the vegetable garden up here, and we're getting a germination now at that particular point, so we'll just have to wait and see. One of the things that we did come up with, we had quite a discussion on it, is this landscape maintenance workshop that we approved as a board, and we changed the name on it, we now call it a Landscape Irrigation Workshop, and we have onboard all of our major users at this particular time, and I'm sure we'll have them all on, and what we're going to be doing is we're gonna have a planning session on January the 7th, first Tuesday of the month, and we're gonna be inviting those people, and then we're gonna be figuring out the format of what we want to actually cover. We'd most likely use a panel around a table, and we're just kind of meeting there. I was the one that arranged the people, and I've talked to all the key people at the top of the chain, whether it be in the Unified School District, Parks and Rec with Mike, and the Cemetery, and I'm still working on the Fredder River. They're all excited about this, 'cause they've never had that type of happening before. And what we're after is the wise use of water, and we did change the meeting dates to match better the January 2014 calendar. Instead of meeting as a conservation, we're on the second Tuesday, we're gonna meet on the first Tuesday. And this first one will be a planning session, we'll invite a person or two, and do it from there. And then George gave a report on the water issue, water supply, and he'll be talking about that before this meeting's over with, I would imagine. Staff, anything else you'd like to add?
No, that was pretty much it, and Mark and Tanya Dale were there, and we got some good input from them.
Yes. So it looks like it's gonna be quite interesting, and so for the January 15th meeting, we'll be able to give you a real update, because by that particular time, we'll have had all of them here at a planning session. Okay, and that meeting is on February the 27th.
The workshop.
Workshop, the workshop will be here on February the 27th. The workshop itself. The irrigation, irrigation workshop. It is scheduled for the February 27th, from noon till 4:00. Good. Okay, General Managers' Report, please.
Thank you. You don't have my written report, 'cause I was at Aqua, the Aqua Conference last week, and I need to go through my notes, so I'm not prepared to give my official Aqua report to you. I'll do that in the January meeting, but I do have a few things to highlight. We worked with, at the last board meeting, the board approved proceeding with a special recyclables day to try and get an extra load of trout for Kids Fishing Day, or get as much support as we can, and so we've got an article put together for that. Tanya and Mark Dale was able to, they've generated this kind of logo and planning for it going forward. We had a meeting yesterday with Doug Spiker and Jennifer Arbuckle of Northern Recycling, and they're very excited about helping us out. The date is January 11th and 12th. We will have a setup with their coordination to collect recyclables at Ace Hardware, and we'll have volunteers there to help people unload it, sort it, do whatever we need to do to get it into barrels, et cetera, and they're very excited to help us, and they also talked about a Phase Two. They have the ability, when you take your recyclables down to their place off of American Way on Lower Clark, that a person can dedicate their recyclables to Kids Fishing Day. So we'll be working as the next phase to get the word out on that, so people know that in the future, you don't have to wait for a special day, they can go down, take the recyclables there, if they want to donate them to Kids Fishing Day. So it's a very good, you know, connection between the two agencies for conservation and basically good environmental work of the people and keeping our watersheds clean, et cetera, so we're very excited about that, that's moving forward. The, let me get you to the... Our lake levels, one of the main discussion points at the Aqua Conference was the anticipation of the third year of drought. Really expecting a statewide drought for a third year, and, and we're not looking so great ourselves. You can see that our lake levels, this is our total storage, are, you know, one of our lowest years that we've seen since 1998. Not a lot of precipitation in the forecast ahead, but as I've said before, we're really keyed on January, February, that's where our focus will be. Luckily, last year, we were full before we had the driest January and February in record, so it saved us, but it did start us probably a little bit behind the curve than, than we could, could have been with the very dry spring, so just keep that in mind, we'll keep an eye on it, and I'll keep updating you on that.
Can I say something, George?
Yeah.
2013 is shaping up to be, the calendar year 2013 is the driest historically, and that's pretty much standard throughout the state.
Since when?
Ever, since records have been kept.
Wow.
And the only reason, as George said, we're, we're doing okay in the district here is because we were so, we were relatively wet last November and December, but if we have a below-average year next year, and especially the January, February timeframe, I'm really concerned about this, so it's something that may have to come back to you and start an education campaign more aggressively to our constituents.
And keep in mind, we have through our Urban Water Management Plan, kind of our, we've determined April 1st is the, kind of the deadline date for the district. If we don't get the water supply we need by April 1st, we can't expect to get it after that. So our, our customer reductions are based on what our storage level is on April 1st, so keep that in mind as, as the winter moves on, whether, depending on how severe, whether it's a voluntary, whether we have penalties associated with it, you know, I'll have to talk to Dustin at some point about special drought rates. I know there's been a couple cases about those, and so we gotta make sure we, we have, you as a board know all of your abilities that you have for options to help survive a drought.
How? Go ahead.
At my lodge meeting Monday night, one of the fellows there is involved with a pump company in Chico, is one of the managers there. They're having record business, they can't, they're drilling wells all over the valley, and people have gone to the maximum that they can lower the bowls in the well, that's where your pump actually turns and pumps the water up to drill casing, to the point where they're drilling new wells, they've got all their well-drilling crews going, everything is maxed out, and the best year they've ever had, I guess. And, but keep in mind, most of this is on the west side of the valley, it's not on this side, and over, it'd be out of Willows and other places where they've recently developed orchards, even with the lowest sprinkler water application methods they have, and their, a well costs like $100,000, he was telling me, and I said, "Yeah, but they're protecting it," he said, "Yeah, millions of dollars investments in these orchards." So it is already at a critical stage on the west side, 'cause the west side didn't get much rain last year, and I don't know what the districts, water districts are doing over there, but this is, people are on the wells outside the districts.
Yeah, on the west side, it's mostly federal contractors, and they've gotten no word, they expect a 0% allocation right now, so even north of the delta, they'll have significant cutbacks at this point. You do see well drilling on the east side, north of Chico, Vina, up in that area, that's, that's picked up a little, because they don't have the irrigation districts to support them, like Rich Vale Irrigation and Western Canal and those guys.
There is one district in Vina, I don't know how large it is, but it uses one major creek it comes down.
Yeah, I represent them.
Oh, okay, well, how far are they?
Stanford Vina. It's called Stanford Vina Mutual Water Company.
How old is our drought policy?
It's, it was re-looked at in the Urban Water Management Plan in 2010.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, 'cause I was thinking, if it's old, maybe we should look at it again before, before April 1st, but if it's that new, we probably won't have to then. Are we still gonna punish people who use very little water in a drought?
That's a decision you have to make. Right now, the, the decision has been a blanket percentage based on our storage, but doing that, you know, we always figured we're gonna have to get together as a board and figure out if that's right, because you got your A customers, that they're not, they're not gonna be able to cut 15, 20, 30% back, 'cause they're already using very little outside.
I know, I couldn't cut back at my office.
Yeah, so, so it's gonna be pretty, and then there's always nuances, because if you use a three-year average, and you require them to be a percentage less than a three-year average, then those people that were not water-wise for three years actually benefit when you go into a drought, 'cause it's easier for them to cut back. So there's a lot of, a lot of things we'll have to deal with to try and make this as fair as possible.
And we shouldn't do this before?
Well, I think we should start with our publications of advising our clients now that we're in a drought. They're gonna look around at this cold weather, weather, and the snow on the ground, and say, "Oh," they don't know what they're talking about, but the same statistics that we have, we need to start bringing to their attention, so they don't get blindsided on April 1st, for example.
I guess keeping that arrow pointing down is probably a good idea. Even though it's misleading. Okay.
We're still working with water rights, you know, dealing with the state, state agency during the holidays is a little, not as easy to get contacts and information back and forth, but we're still on that. The, the Process Water Cycle Project, the final report is... is about ninety-eight percent done. Like he's getting ready to send it to staff for us to take a look at it. It won't go to you because they're just getting the, the constructed wetlands consultant on board and they expect a report from him, they're hoping late January. So as soon as we, we're going to try and plan a special meeting to coincide that report. So you'll have that report and the report on everything else all at the same time, so you can make a decision moving forward.
What is our dead date on that in order to get it done before the requirement?
Oh, it's, we're, we're, we're behind the curve already.
Already?
Yeah.
But do we have a date that we have to do something by?
Well, I would expect we need to have contracts let out by the end of this year.
Oh, that long?
Construction started before, I mean, if we truly wanted to make the deadline.
Can't make it.
We can't really make it.
But if we're doing it, they'll give us an exemption?
I'm confident we'll get an extension.
Did you say this year, you're talking twenty thirteen?
Twenty fif, twenty fourteen.
Fourteen, okay.
I'm already in next year.
This year's over. I was like, I was like, really? We're going to, how can we let out contracts before we get the report?
We're going to have to go through this two eighteen or two fifty, what is it?
Two eighteen.
Two, it's a two eighteen process before we go out to bid. We are?
And CEQA.
And CEQA. Oh, we do, two eighteen? That's if we raise the rates.
Yeah.
We find ways to pay for it.
If we, if we don't raise the rates, we won't have to do it two eighteen.
If we're going to spend eight million.
We borrow the money.
If we're going to spend eight million dollars.
We don't have to do a two eighteen, do we?
We, we can't, we, we wouldn't be able to go out and borrow
Without a rate increase.
Without a rate increase, because we don't have the ratios that would meet the criteria to.
Oh, we can't borrow without a rate increase?
Not on our current situation.
Not these type of dollars.
Oh, okay. All right, I hope our due. I, I hope our dues.
CFO?
CFO, I'll get it out here in a minute.
Whoever that may be.
He, he and I agree completely on this. Any capital outlay. Kevin, any capital outlay has got to be figured with some way to pay for it. Right? So if you're talking eight million bucks or whatever it turns out to be, we're almost assured of having a rate increase. We can sell some of your property and get it real easy.
And last, lastly, on the corp yard, we're still got a plan and pace to get a temporary occupancy permit and moved in January. The, the P G N E connection has been relocated to the new pole. And this, this power station here and we're connected to the office, so we're now on one meter. So as soon as we can get the, write people up to do the startup on the emergency generator, we will have complete emergency backup power for both facilities in the event of power outage.
How much notice do we have to give our landlord at the old yard?
Kevin's been talking to him, he knows where we're at.
Oh, okay.
Is he anxious for us to get out so he can use his property?
Well, he, he, he started marketing it late fall because he wanted to make sure he knew we were on track to get out of there. So he's marketing it at this point.
So he, he's not going to develop, he's just going to flip it?
More than likely, that's usually what he does.
Good. That's, any questions, other questions to the manager? The general manager? Any from the audience? Nope. Okay, we will move on to legal report.
Okay, the Bay Delta Conservation Plan BDCP came out on Monday. Thirty-nine thousand pages.
How many?
Thirty-nine thousand pages.
Did you make it all the way through?
You know, I tried to do the math to figure out, because there's a hundred and twenty day comment period.
Wow.
It's, so I wanted to know, how many pages do I need to read every hour in order to finish, just read the thing in the hour?
Calculators are coming out.
But, but a couple highlights that I do know. The preferred alternative is two tunnels, nine thousand CFS. So to put that into perspective, that's eighteen thousand acre feet per day. Capacity of these tunnels.
You could drain both our lakes.
Yeah, and.
One and a half of our lakes.
The entire district uses what, five or six thousand acre feet here? So that's some perspective on how huge these things are. They're also talking twenty-five thousand acres of tidal marsh restoration, habitat restoration. I was in a meeting on Monday, kind of, the, the director of the Department of Water Resources was there. He's, this is their project. This is the state agency that will go in the project, operate the project. He also happens, DWR kind of represents the state water contractors. And he was very candid in his discussion of these, of this project. And I asked the question, kind of along the lines, I'm having a hard time understanding, given the cost, all the various factors, why the state contractors would be interested in this project? What do they get out of it? And he said, he was pretty candid, he said, I don't understand myself anymore. So what that told me is, this is kind of this bureaucracy of the state kind of doing, putting this plan out, just to put it out, just to say they did. There's still a pretty good chance in my mind that the whole thing will fall apart. And there's many people that think that that would be good. But I, I think in the coming months, I'll try to have a better idea of what this means to the district. Two areas where I think will be my focus is, one is additional water demands. And they're talking about a, it's called X-two. X-two is the location in the delta where the salinity line is. And the more water you put into the delta, the, obviously it pushes the salinity line out towards the Golden Gate Bridge. So they haven't set where that salinity line is. And that would be important to the district, because if they push the salinity line out, that means more water has to flow through the delta. And there could be additional water demands on this district. So that's one area. The other area is, who's going to pay for? The state estimates this is going to cost fourteen million dollars. I think it's more like, excuse me, billion dollars.
I was going to say fourteen million.
Write the check out.
Yeah, I'd heard fifty billion.
It's a huge spread and the, the experts say that it's much closer to fifty billion. So the little part of the financing plan that I've read appears to point the finger at everybody. Everybody's got to pay for this. So it's out. I expect you guys will begin receiving questions from maybe some of your interested constituents. And I'll try to provide you more detailed information on, to help you kind of formulate an opinion on it in the coming months.
Would, would that need a two eighteen?
The state is talking about, the state doesn't have to comply with Prop two eighteen.
Right.
It's talking about, it's very ambiguous language. They're talking about expanding water right fees. Currently, the district pays for post nineteen fourteen appropriative rights, a fee based on those. The district also has a pre-fourteen right, eight CFS. So they're talking about trying to target those. George and I talked yesterday, there, there has been discussions in the past about some kind of per-connection charge. If you have treated water, you, you pay a fee based on how many connections you have. Of course, new taxes, the whole gambit of what the state could do. The, and the plan is not going to be that detailed, so it's going to be left to interpretation. So.
And then, and on the other side, the entire talk last week was the legislature saying, we don't think the public will accept a water bond in twenty-fourteen, so we don't even think it'll be on the ballot in the fall. So it's like, they're ready to spend the money through the back door, but they understand the people don't want to pay for a bond if it's straight up in front of them, so.
Yeah.
It's pretty interesting.
Anything more? Okay, any questions? Public or directors?
Is it going to be your job to read thirty-nine thousand pages?
I physically can't do it, my office can't do it.
It's only four hundred and sixty pages a day.
I, I have no idea, I'm looking online.
A novel a day.
It takes minutes, even with the fast internet connection, to pull the document up. So that tells you how large it is.
Hell, we have to vote for it to approve it, then we can see what we've got. Yes, Nancy, yes, Nancy.
The good thing is, the district is part of a coalition of North State water entities. And I'm part of the attorney group and we're dividing up the work on not just the time in reviewing the document, but also the time in preparing comments. This is the type of thing, if you don't prepare comments expressing your concerns, then if it ever came down five, ten years down the road, when this is something that we had to litigate, for example, you would be excluded from litigating it if you didn't file comments. So it's good that you're part of this larger group to kind of share in the, in the cost of that. And, and then it helps me a lot, because I just can't read thirty-nine thousand pages in a hundred and twenty days. It's not possible.
Right. This, this larger group you're talking about, Dustin, is, I noticed on your bill here that you have divided by nine. That would be one of the groups where we're paying part of seventy, seventy-two hundred dollar bill and we're paying eight hundred and seven dollars, it's divided by nine.
Yeah, it's actually two divisions.
Yeah, then there's one here for, where we divided by four.
Yeah, that's a different. There's, but there's two divisions here. One is you're part of the group, the large group, so the district is paying part of that. So that is hiring experts, biologists, you've got a modeler. Because the entire basis of the BDCP, a lot of it is based on very technical modeling. And we've got some very good experts to help us explain why their modeling is inaccurate. And it's actually underestimating the through delta deliveries by two hundred thousand acre feet, which is, again, it's a huge number. So they're underestimating the impacts of their own project based on their own modeling. And what's fascinating is DWR recognizes, recognizes that there's these modeling errors. But because there's so much political pressure to get this document on the street, they just can't. They don't have the time to fix it. So, but, but you're sharing in the expense of that. The second level is, I have a number of clients that are interested in this. And you're sharing my time amongst those clients. So that's, that's the division that you see on.
That's the nine.
That's the nine, yes.
Yeah, we got, I realize we have to do this, because of, that's the way the world turns. Have we got any idea, CFO, how many dollars we're going to be spending on this by the time it's all shook out?
I mean, I can't estimate how many hours Dustin thinks, I know what his bill rate is, but I don't know how many hours he's going to.
My view, I, I think I told you this a number of months ago. You could go crazy and spend a fortune on this, going to every meeting, fighting all the way, hiring experts. I don't think you ought to do that, because I still think this thing is going to collapse under its own weight. I think that's a good possibility. So my recommendation at this point in time is, you, you do need to invest in kind of monitoring.
I understand that, what you're doing now.
Yeah.
I understand.
And I don't think, what, what did you say it was, a thousand or so?
Yeah, the, this month there was billing on ten, thirty, thirty-one. There was a seventy-two hundred dollar bill, round figures, divided by nine. And we're one of those nine.
So I think for my time, it's, it's going to be a thousand to two thousand to the district a month for the next five months or so.
Next five months, okay.
It's probably been less than five in twenty-thirteen.
Yeah, yeah, but the reason I'm increasing is because we've got this comment period, so.
I understand.
And then.
What, you said the four, we divided two thou, nineteen hundred and seventy-seven dollars by four.
I think that's a different matter.
Yeah, it's a different matter, what matter is that? That's the state mandate, isn't it?
Yeah, state mandate claim.
State mandate, okay.
But this is a preview of a letter that I'm going to write, but the, the management committee, which is the, the committee, George is, is a part of this, although he wasn't at the meeting. But the management committee governs who they, who they hire as experts, biologists, the modeler. They just approved, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars in new expert consultant expenses to assist in preparing comments. And those expenses, I haven't been seeing those bills, but I imagine they're pretty small. Because that's shared amongst a very large group.
It's also shared on a water, either water rights or water.
Yeah, I think.
Water rights calculation or something, so we have a small number compared to the big group.
Sounds good. If that answers my question to the same.
So I'm thinking, I mean, let, let's be conservative. I would, I would say five thousand or less per month over the next five months.
So we're looking at twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah. And then things will calm down. But, you know, that's, there are some attorneys that are literally devoting their entire practice to this. And I, I don't think that's worthwhile. So I still think it's, it's something that you need to be aware of. It's worth the money to monitor it and kind of prepare yourself if you do need to, to take a more active role. You need to be prepared to do that, but not at this time.
Thank you, Dustin.
And we also are going to have a, a very small article in the newsletter that just kind of letting people know in paradise that that big thing down there does have potential impacts to us, just so they're aware. And they also know that we're looking at it and we're aware.
I've had a couple of people talk to me about it already. One of them's in Ag, one of them's up here. And I just said, it's a state water program. And if you have any water, you're involved in it. Which would be the right way to say it. Okay, I'm going to now recess the special meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District and convene the Paradise Irrigation District Public Facilities Financing Corporation. A roll call, please. It doesn't have it here, but we had it last time, so.
Director Fletcher.
Here.
Director Hens.
Here.
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 Here. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the October twentieth, two thousand and ten minutes.
I moved to approve the minutes, as I recall them.
I, I was president at the, at the last meeting. So we don't meet annually, I guess. Okay, they moved and seconded them. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You going to stay because you weren't here?
I wasn't here, so.
Okay.
Although I'll take your folks' word for it.
Okay. Okay, public participation, the same announcement, I don't think we're going to have any, and so I'll just, you can read it for yourself. Okay, and four is a financing update, Treasurer Phillips.
Yeah, so you, you remember that the last time we used this corporation was for two thousand and nine, the two thousand and nine certificates of participation? Just to give you a idea of why this is set up, is that the attorneys and lawyers came up with a plan to be able to give us the vehicle to issue debt without having to go to a voter-approved debt. So it allowed us to pledge our revenues to basically go out and acquire debt to purchase assets without having to get it approved by the complete public vote. It's, in a way, it, all projects that were to be done this way would go hand in hand with the district. So the corporation can't do anything without the district and the district can do things without the corporation, but can't do certificates of participation without the corporation. And it's basically like a leasing option. So basically, the corporation goes out and buys it and then leases it to the, to the district. The district then pays the leases and that's kind of how the whole system is set up. So they, they work hand in hand, so it makes sense for this board to be the board of directors on that corporation and vice versa. And just to let you, or to update you on the, on the financing, we were, we went out and financed the automated meter reading project. That was a five million dollar project. If you remember, the first five years of the, of that debt, it was a fifteen-year debt. The first five years was at a lower reduced principal and interest payment because it fit into our debt structure. So we had that two thousand and one bond refunding, that was a large payment. We had that remaining until two thousand and fourteen. Since then, we went out and refinanced that to bring down that debt service payment. But that falls off in two thousand and fourteen, so we kept the debt service pay. So we kept the debt service payments at three hundred and fifteen thousand a year for that, for the first five years. And then the next ten years, it jumps to about six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year because it, that, by that debt falling off, it opened up cash flow to pay for the remaining debt over that ten-year period. So I just want to remind everybody that this is our last year of that reduced debt on that portion of that two thousand and nine COP. Next year, it's gonna jump to six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. But the two thousand and one bond refunding and now that it's, I call it the two thousand and eleven refinance, that's falling off the books. So that's five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that we will not be obligated to pay next year, but we will increase our debt on the two thousand and nine COP about three hundred thousand dollars.
What's coming off the books?
The two thousand and eleven refinance, do you remember we went out and refinanced that debt over three years? That's gonna come off the books, where we're gonna pay it off.
It'll be paid off then.
At the end of this year, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, so when you.
Two thousand and thirteen.
The what?
End of this year, two thousand and thirteen.
The two thousand and thirteen, fourteen fiscal year.
Fiscal year, fiscal year, next June.
As of, as of June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, that'll come off the books. But next year, our debt will increase on that, two thousand and nine to six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
So they offset each other basically?
Uh, there'll be net difference of two hundred thousand dollars.
Or the way or their way?
Positive.
Plus.
Plus to us.
Yeah, we'll be spending that much less.
Oh, plus.
What, what are the, is there any possibility of recalling the, whatever, what were they, bonds?
To, to call the bonds?
Call the bonds and get cheaper financing?
There is a no prepayment penalty and if I can rack my brain, I believe it was seven years, that we cannot prepay those, those bonds. So we cannot go out and call the bonds for, for another four years, three years. And so there's, if you do, there's a one percent penalty.
But if you got something that, what percentage are we paying?
Uh, well, they're tranches, so they're all at different levels, but overall about four and a half.
Oh, so it's not that high.
Yeah. The longer ones are at like five, six, the shorter ones were like at two, those have been paid off, but they're all done in kind of tranches.
Right. Okay, there, so it's not high, so it's probably, probably not worth it.
Not at this point, but we'll, uh, once that seven years falls off, we can always look into there and, uh, I'm going down to San Francisco and I'll probably be talking with our bond broker that's down there. I'm going down today, so I'll talk to him one, today or tomorrow. And those are things he's always looking into us for and I'm always discussing about, hey, what's out there, what are, what are we looking at for refinancing? Is there somebody out there that might be able to take these on with, with very low cost?
What about the, you said we can't, we have to do two eighteen on the eight million. Why can't we do it through here?
Well, you can do it. You would do it through a COP probably, but you would have to have the revenues to pledge. We don't have the revenues to pledge.
We don't have any left, huh?
Yeah, just like if you would go out and buy a house, you can't just go out and buy a house without having the money to pay for that house. So that's.
You used to be able to.
I know. Things have changed.
That's what got us in trouble. That's what got the, the United States in trouble.
The whole world.
Okay. That's it then?
That's it for my final update.
Okay, new business, amendment to the bylaws? Do you wanna?
Oh yeah, so just, the bylaws had our physical address at the Black Olive Drive. And so.
The only change we're recommending.
The only change we're recommending is that it be changed to the six-three-three-two clerk route.
Now, we, before we were the directors of this, weren't we paying somebody to do this?
No, when it was originally set up, rather than having this board be the financing board, they had members in the financial community in Paradise Bank, people who worked at banks, et cetera, that were sitting on the board. So it made it a little difficult sometimes to get meetings when we needed them.
And we weren't paying them?
No, they were not being paid.
That's why it was difficult. One of the reasons.
And then they changed, they move on to another bank and you, you know, just trying to get someone else named is a bit of a problem.
Yes, actually, that's a point that I wanted to bring up. You know, we, we of course cannot discuss it in this particular meeting because it's not part of the agenda, but I think that we should call another meeting before a year goes by and actually that we should change section three point one-one, the comp of directors, to align it to the same as we have for the PID. And the reason being is because historically, we've always had these meetings on the same day and we probably will continue to do that, especially if it's routine business. But if we get into a situation where Kevin finds a, you know, a hot deal and he wants to bring in the, the, the board of directors, I don't think there's, there should be any reason why we should meet on a particular day to discuss company business without being compensated for it.
Yeah, but the chances are slim.
Yeah, so it may never come to pass.
Right.
But, so that's fine.
You can change it. This is, amendment of the bylaws is on the agenda.
Just in general.
We could change it today then.
You could change it.
Well, I, I would recommend talk, having Kevin talk with bond counsel or whoever it may be.
And I, I just wanted to, in reality, on how things would happen, would be that the board of directors of Paradise Irrigation District would hear all financing options, financing discussions. This is only a vehicle to secure the financing. So like I said, they go hand in hand. So all of the discussion and the approval.
So the meat and potatoes will be presented to the PID board and then we'll recess, consider it as this board and then go back in.
That's correct.
So we won't ever meet by ourselves?
I just thought that if it were ever to come up.
Cause this board have, the, not this board right at the moment, but the PID board has to approve the project and this.
And the, yeah.
This board approves the financing.
And they cannot approve the project, so.
So you can't do one without the other.
Were you here with, when we did the meters? When we did the automatic meters, were you here?
Yes.
Cause see, that, that's what happened last time is PID approved it and then the corporation didn't. Wasn't that what happened?
They, they didn't pass an affirming vote because it was two-two.
Right, it was a two-two vote.
But then it was recast.
Right.
Three-one.
It went three-one, yeah. But we had the, we had the meter people, Chevron really worried.
No.
The bond people, bond counsel.
They had to do a lot of extra legwork to make sure it was legal.
Uh-huh. Mr. President, I had a, in other words, would we, for whatever kind of financing or rate adjustment or whatever happens to be on this new wastewater project, the financing part of it will come from this group here. Is this right?
Most likely.
But not necessarily.
Most likely or not definitely, or what? I mean, in other words, if we go out to borrow money, then it'll come from this group?
It would come from that, the vehicle would be used to secure that financing, correct?
Only with, only with CLPs.
With, with pledging of revenues.
But only if you do certificates of participation. If we get financing through the state of California, then this corporation doesn't come into.
Okay.
That's correct.
But let's say if we get half financing from the state of California, then the other half will come from this outfit.
Possibly, yes.
It could happen.
That, that's an option. The other option.
That'd be an option.
You could do multiple options, but this is.
Okay, when we go off with this, when we go off with this two eighteen, would we do it through the regular PID or through the financing?
This, this, this corporation has no revenue, so there's no revenues to even generate, to even, to pledge.
Good, no problem.
Okay. I entertain a motion.
A motion to accept the treasurer's report.
No, no, no.
Yes. Thank you.
Are we gonna do the financing, the financing update? Is that what we want?
That was information only, yeah, we wanna do the amendment to the bylaws.
I'm looking one line up.
The amendment is just strictly the address.
Correct.
Okay, good.
I'll make a motion to accept the amendment to the bylaws as presented.
I'll second that.
To adopt resolution.
Adopt resolution number twenty thirteen dash ten.
Okay, I'll sec, I second that.
He retires from being president and this.
Falls apart, falls apart one day.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, roll call please.
Director Flesch?
Yes.
Director Henn?
Yes.
Director Kroll?
Yes.
Director Teller?
Yes.
President Henn, Senator Dunn?
Yes. Okay, it moves five oh. Okay, now I'm going to adjourn this meeting and re-convene as the Paradise Irrigation Special, Special District Meeting of the Directors. And we're going to eight, old business, which is customer appeal from Larry and Lucita.
Lucretia.
Lucretia? Well, you got a good one, huh?
Yeah, say the last name.
Yeah, say the last name too.
The last name is Klungvett, the first P side.
Klungvett, okay. And review and consider information to address the district-owned road and culvert conditions involving E Oak Street and Shady Lane in Paradise. General Manager, Barbara, please.
Yes, um, you have my written memo, I did, we did sit down and talk about the project or about the problem and I really, I feel for their situation, but ultimately, you're talking about a twenty thousand dollar expense and that's materials only on my estimate for one single road that all of our customers would have to pay for. And I have at this point, just a little uncomfortable recommending that we proceed with that. We looked into the liability issues as far as ownership of this road and, you know, nothing's ever cut and dried, but I still don't believe we have a responsibility to make this type of repair, even though we're under road ownership. We did some research into the title, it's gonna take additional expenses to really dig deep to figure out which property has an agreement with the district for road maintenance or not, just what.
Or with the county.
Or with the county, possibly. And so until I got some direction from this board, I wasn't ready to embark on that because it could, it could be a long dig for a title company from fifteen hundred to, you know, three, four thousand dollars to do that research.
At a recent, the Butte County Resource Conservation District Board meeting, we got involved in road jobs in the county and Doug Teeter was there with the head of the county maintenance road, and he basically said they don't have any money to put into anything. Teeter told me the other day about another incident where a road's been cut off and the county doesn't have any money to go in and remove the cutoff site, even though it's not on the proper area or land and all that. So there's no, no help at the county for something like this.
I do want to point out one more thing and then I would suggest we hear from Mrs. Klungvett.
That's what I was gonna ask for, yeah.
Get the view up. This is really hard to read, so that's why we have the list, but all of these purple circles you see.
Wow.
Around town, those are right-ofways that we know we have an ownership in.
Any of them got culverts?
I'm sure they do.
Excuse me, George, ownership of the property or ownership of the right-ofway, the easement?
The property. We, I mean, we're.
We own the road.
We own the property that the road lies on.
We own the property, but we do not own the easement.
Instead of having an easement, we have property.
Yes.
And we give easements to other people.
Yes, we give them ingress, egress rights and rights to use the road with no promise of maintenance.
It's a little over five miles.
Yes. So that, that's the other part of my concern is if, if you are willing to do something to assist in this situation, it would have to be clearly stated by the board that this is only about concerns about liability because of that individual culvert and absolutely no reason for taking on road maintenance. But I can't tell you that there isn't five other culverts that people are gonna come in and say, well, I have the same problem, or the brush, the road's not too wide, or there's trees now grown and the fire truck can't get by it, or, you know, we are a public agency, you take action in one place, like you saw with the residential irrigation, you know, we made one little tweak to open that up and then we, we kept, we've gotten a continual flood of people not only wanting it, but also wanting you to change the rules to make it work for them.
Change it just a little more.
So just want to make you aware of that.
Okay, the other question is, did Neil check into the, the possibility of putting something through it instead? He said he was gonna.
No, that was something I was gonna work on. I mean, I've looked at it, I haven't calced it, it would be a, you know, it would save some money, but it, you know, it's not, not gonna be a ton of money saved because to do that, you're gonna have to go through SEQA, you're gonna have to get an Army Corps permit because you're working in the creek at that point. And so.
Fish and Wildlife.
Fish and Wildlife permit, food alteration.
But to do the other, we don't need that?
No, because we're, we're on the top of the road. It's a road maintenance type project and there's a SEQA exemption for that.
What would we be doing?
To go over it?
Yeah.
That's where we would probably construct a eight-inch minimum slab with rebar. It would be designed to withstand the load of a fire truck and we would build footings outside of that culvert. So.
It'd go the whole road then?
So you, yeah, over the whole road and then you'd bring in gravel to taper it off. Let me see if I can get to that.
Okay, now I understand. You got on page iPad sixty-six.
Yeah, this.
Let me.
This culvert right here, see the footings are being undermined? That's the big concern. So you go outside of that area to stable ground, you dig out new footings and you're basically building a beam that would carry the load as if it was.
You're building a bridge over the bridge.
Yeah, exactly.
So you're not touching the water?
Correct.
Okay. Um, the other question is, you said somewhere that they had to back in the fire truck?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be easier to drive into the emergency and then back out after the emergency?
They always, regardless of incident, they always plan for their escape route.
Oh.
So they, they anticipate having to make a fast escape and they always back into a situation so they can get out as quickly as they need it. Or a larger emergency, you know, they may be called for a mine or something and then a larger emergency happens, they need to get there quickly, so they have to be prepared to exit as quickly as possible, so.
Okay, and we don't have, do we have a, a method of assessing all the property owners on that road to pay for this?
We don't, no.
We don't.
You could do a special assessment under Prop two eighteen, but that's subject to an election. So you'd have to go through the process and then you'd have to get the affirmative vote from the affected landowners.
Oh, just from the landowner?
Yeah, because they would become, remember we do two eighteen every, you know, every similar group of people is who we count the votes for? Well, if you're doing a road assessment, then all of these property owners on this five miles of road would have a vote and so, or a protest vote. So if the majority protested, that you wouldn't be able to institute that.
You're on the assessment side, so you actually need a fifty percent plus one vote.
And what would something like that cost?
Well, for the assessment side, you need an engineer's report, which is something George could probably do in-house, but that's a significant undertaking. And then you've got the regular Prop two eighteen process, mail ballots, notice, forty-five day, you know, a couple of public hearings, and then you conduct the vote. And you could lose the vote. Cause it's, it's much tougher than the increase. The increase, you could impose it as long as there's not a majority protest. With an assessment, you need a fifty percent plus one vote, affirmative vote. So it's difficult.
Right. I'm asking these questions to give her this information if she doesn't already have it.
I'd like to.
Okay, well, why don't we hear from her first?
I'd like to have my input before she.
Oh, okay.
If possible. And the reason for this, we haven't met other than here at the boardroom, since it's an that large election, I consider everybody in the district my constituent, okay? But I came to find out that this happens to be in my division. And how I found that out is I got a letter from one of the other landowners on there, Joe O'Connor, and I happen to know Joe. But anyway, it's quite a nice letter, and you didn't include this, but you got a copy of it, or you got the letter, it was to me. Remember, you and I met on this.
Yeah, he, he didn't want it public, so-
Right, I realize that, and that's a good point of doing that. And the only thing that we would put down, and he's very complimentary on you and your husband, is what, it's a superhighway compared to what it used to be. So the minute that I found out that it was in my area, I went down and drove in and looked at the property, and the culvert, and I got pictures also, but I didn't get out on my hands and knees because of my age and stage, but Joe's, George, we've got some good ones here. But one of these culverts, the brambles and berry vines have outgrown, and you have a very difficult time seeing the edge of the thing. And I know George has talked to the fire department, and I used to go fight fires once in a while. And you always back in, because you can drive out easy, boy. But, so they would do that. But anyway, it's our property, and that's what I run around in my mind on here. So anyway, I just wanted to know that. I went and looked at it, and George and I met on the thing, and I concur exactly what he's talking about doing. I've done that on a couple of roads myself, where you pour a bridge right over the top of the mess, and it's fine. Make it thick enough so you can drive a D8 across it.
But he's saying we shouldn't do it.
Huh?
George is recommending that we don't do it.
No, his, if we did it, we would use his recommendation, which would cost us $20,000 of material. That's the concrete and the rebar, you know, and the footing in here. Because as you can see by the picture in here, it's gone.
Yeah, but he's saying, he's recommending that we don't do that.
I understand that, I understand that.
Okay.
Anyway.
Just want to make sure you-
I just wanted to make sure that she do it, because it's actually in my division, but I consider it all my division, so. And I was down there, looked at it, and I empathize with you.
Does anyone else want to talk before she gives her presentation?
No, no, I'm ready.
So, addressing the press, please don't put Joe O'Connor's name in any article, thank you. Because he would like to be anonymous. He doesn't, this could affect his insurance, it could affect all kinds of things, until things are remedied.
Yeah.
So how do you spell that name?
I'm going to, I'm going to insert comments.
Right.
Because that's what I need to do to get my point across also, in case there's any kind of litigation down the road.
Right.
Okay. I'm not very good at this, so I promise it's not gonna take more than seven to ten minutes. Just let me get through it, and if you have questions for me, okay. I brought with me today two grant of easements for PID. These are from other people in the neighborhood. These were signed in the sixties. And it does clearly state on there that you have easement rights, and that you are to maintain the road at your cost solely. On two of them. I have a third one that's a grant of right-ofway that has absolutely nothing on it about maintaining the road. I once again call Big Bull Title Company. They have nothing on their records, I have nothing in my paperwork. It gives the coordinates of our property, but underneath it, there is nothing about maintaining the road. The only reason we've been maintaining the road is because we were told by neighbors that that was what we were supposed to do, because it was a private road. I didn't even know it was a PID road for many years. It was just a private road. And I have those for you today, if you want to look at them.
Yeah, do you have copies?
No.
I mean, we should have that. Are you, what you're saying is-
But I will make copies and bring them back.
Well, we can make copies, but what you're saying is, is that you have recorded documentation that somebody else owns this property, and they've given easements to PID?
Correct.
Who owns the property?
No, PID does.
Well, then that, PID doesn't need an easement if we own the property.
No, no, these are easements to the people.
Granted easements.
Okay, well, you said it different. You, you said these were easements granted to PID. That's what I need to find out.
Oh, no, these are easements granted to people.
In other words, Mr. President, if we, I would assume if we're going to grant eighty easements, it would come before the board, and we would act as the board, we're giving easement to such a person to drive, use PID property to drive it.
Years and years ago, who knows what, what they did.
So whether it be the board that did it then, or-
Yeah, it takes board action.
Yeah, board action. But realizing, because my folks were doing a bunch of buying in the 1940s, it was a whole different world back then. Property was worth fifty bucks an acre, don't worry about it. And we're reaping the benefits of it.
So in this matter, clearly, consistency is really a serious issue, as, as far as this goes. Because we, our documents say one thing, their documents say something else, and these documents say something else.
No, I, I don't understand your point there, though.
That they all don't say that they have to maintain the road. Some say yes, and some say no.
Some have signatures, some don't.
Yeah.
And you have copies of that?
Yes.
You're gonna see of the easements that PID granted to these other parcels?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then there are some parcels where there is no mention of an easement at all?
No mention of a-
Oh, there's a mention of an easement, but there's no mention about whether there has to be maintenance?
On ours, there is no mention of an easement at all.
Yeah. And there, of course, is law based upon no mention of, of responsibility there, but we'll get to that later.
Some easements are dropped accidentally as property changes hands.
So even in, and you have to understand, this is my opinion, and I know it's my opinion. But there is, however, not a word on any of these documents, how these roads should be repaired, how often they should be repaired, what kind of, what kind of materials should you repair them with. And it's also, what are the consequences for these people? When the majority of these people, you have to understand where we live, three-quarters of these people are renters. So the owners are long gone doing something else, and they're just renting to these people. So are, now are the renters supposed to repair that, or the owners supposed to repair that? Some people put big chunks of cement in the road, so you're going down the road, and now you're driving over big piles of cement. It's a drainage issue, because people do not trim back the berry bushes. They don't go out and create drainage, so it's a flooding issue. So if you're gonna have a document that tells people they have easement rights, and they need to maintain the road, there should also be clarification on how to do that. It's consistency. Everybody has to do it. Two people on a road that has fifty homes is not gonna make this road very well. It was explained to me that the fee process was not going to work, because people would be upset that they had to pay for repairs on our road. Well, we would have to pay for repairs on their road if it came up. Fee is a stockpile of money that you pull from when things need to be taken care of on roads. So you addressed parts of this. I read and printed out Proposition 18. This could also fall under the Improvement Act of 1911, Streets and Hideaways on Code Section 5000. And there's a possibility of a special assessment in Proposition 26 that this could fall under. I believe that this would be the only way to regain consistency regarding the road maintenance. Who's been, who, who's supposed to police these people? If it's a PID road, and you just say, maintain it, who's gonna police them? Is that gonna be me? Is that gonna be Joe O'Connor? Is that gonna be the ninety-three-year-old woman who lives down the street? Because she's lived there the longest? I don't know. No consistency. It is our understanding, speaking of roads, excuse me. It is our understanding that PID owns part of Academy Drive. Is this correct?
County what?
Academy Drive, did you say?
Academy Drive?
Yes.
It's on the list?
Yes. It's-
Which part?
It's in question, but we think so.
Yeah, is it-
This road, when you go down Academy Drive, is pristine. It's paved, it's got curbs, it's got gutters. Who maintains this road?
I see the city out on it.
Hey, then why wasn't, why wasn't that section of road sold to the Town of Paradise then?
Talk to the Town of Paradise.
Well, I'm talking to PID, it's your road.
But you asked us, why is it maintained? We don't know.
And we don't own the whole, we only own half.
Okay, so that half, who maintains that? Is the town maintaining that?
PID is not.
Okay, so again, we have a road. If they're maintaining it, is that because there's an influential church or a school on that road that it gets special treatment? Is it because it goes to Performing Arts Center at the senior center? It's an inlet and an outlet? It's really hard to grasp that this culvert, who could cost, who could cost loss of life because they do not have proper emergency service, is less important than a road that maybe has a special church or a performing arts center on it. And so, I'm here to say, I, I'm not happy with that. I don't know who's maintaining that road. You don't know who's maintaining that road. So you have, don't have an answer for me. But someone is maintaining that portion of road. Okay, so the road aside, I've never come to PID before the roads. We've just been maintaining them. Does it tick me off every time we do it and we have no help? It does. And I get over it. But let's talk about the culverts, and I'm, and then I'm done. This is really short. This is a safety concern for the people who live on the other side of that culvert. If there is death or loss of home possessions, there will be a lawsuit that is guaranteed. Are you going to stand in a court of law and tell them, well, we knew there was a possibility of a serious safety issue, but we're not in the road maintenance business, so we, we chose to just ignore it? Are you in the water business? Is PID in water business?
Yeah.
Yes.
These culverts?
Not that kind of, not that kind of water.
You know what? It doesn't matter. It's all play on words, it's all a big political thing.
It does matter, okay? We don't do drainage.
Yeah, we don't do drainage.
We don't do sewers.
Yeah, we're, we're only in drinking water.
There's no point on me going on. There's really no point. So if the answer's no, then-
Uh, what's her name?
Lucretia?
Yes. You talked about liability if somebody loses life. Can an ambulance get over this road now?
I just don't know. We have a letter that tells us no.
Ambulance?
I have no other letter that tells me that that's been revised yet.
Ambulance, though, yes. Fire truck, no.
No, she's saying ambulance can't.
I don't think you got a letter from the ambulance service.
No, not from the fire-
It's from the fire department.
Fire department.
It's the fire department who dispatches the ambulance if there's-
Yes, and as my own experience was, a fire department shows up when you have a car wreck. So, and so, the fire department would have to go around for their emergency crew around, because they use fire trucks.
Right, which, which you have to understand now, this is a terrible road. It's really small. There's hardly any place for them to, so they're now gonna have to drive up to the big part of the road, to Scottwood. They're gonna have to back down this train.
Come from Scottwood over?
No place all the way back to Scottwood. There's no place for them to efficiently turn around and back in.
It, it's a, more of a lane than a road, isn't it?
Yes.
And it's a-
Oak and then Shady.
Okay, I don't-
And you live at, towards the end of Shady, if I, if I remember right?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask Dustin a question.
There's three of them, so. Yes, sir. I just keep passing.
On this, it, what I just read, you passed out earlier to the directors, I assume, on the codes. It says we can be sued all the way to the Supreme, Superior Court, is that correct? Or did I exaggerate this or something?
No, maybe I could go through this. I printed this off, obviously, for the board of directors' benefit, but also for your benefit. So, so why don't I walk through it? Because this is the way I view the problem, kind of through this statute. And let me begin by saying I sympathize with you, too. I've actually represented folks in your shoes, where you're on a private road, you're trying to deal with neighbors that either don't have the money or no initiative, whatever it is. So I've been on both sides of this issue, just, and that's why I'm aware of the statute of how it works. The sub-A says, "The owner of an easement shall maintain and repair." The key there is the owner of an easement. The owner of the easement is not the district. The owner of the easement is the individual landowners along the road. So it's clearly their obligation to maintain it. The fact that we own the property, I, in my opinion, it's really irrelevant. It doesn't, from a liability perspective, it doesn't mean we're, we have some obligation to maintain in the event, unfortunate event, that, you know, fire services or emergency services couldn't reach your property, or somebody else's property. I don't think we have any liability there. Doesn't mean we couldn't be sued, but I don't think, in the, even if we were sued, that we'd be subject to any kind of damages or anything.
Does anybody know who built the original culvert? It looks like a homemade job.
Probably a developer, that would be my guess.
Or a farmer. I mean, if you remember this, this whole section of road, I don't know if you'll be able to see it.
Used to all be olive orchard or apple orchard, wasn't it?
It was taken, everything from Pearson, Scottwood, Academy Drive, that whole section was taken back on unpaid property taxes. And then the district sold off pieces and parts over time to individuals, and then ultimately left themselves with this piece in fee. Why they didn't sell that off to people and retain an easement, I have no idea. And, and like I said, back in the 40s, it was a whole different world. We have no idea if, you know, the guy that bought the piece that has no responsibility for maintenance wasn't a buddy with the board at the time. Who knows? Those things happened back in the day.
That's right.
So, back to the statute, subdivision B is, the first sentence is, if there's an agreement, that maintenance will be provided through the agreement. And I, I asked George and staff to kind of look into that a little bit, and they did. Couldn't find a road maintenance agreement, which, this is pre-Town Incorporated, so my guess is, and I still think this is a possibility, my guess is, there may be a county road maintenance agreement that was executed for this road. And that would be something I would encourage you to look into. Because I suspect if there is that document, then when the town incorporated, the town would have assumed that responsibility. That would be something I asked staff to look into. It was very expensive to dig deeper in, in the level of, of investigation that was needed, so we kind of put that on hold. The next sentence, the last sentence is, if there isn't an agreement, so if there's not a county road maintenance agreement, then the cost is shared in proportion to the use of the easement. So, and I've gone through these proceedings. The judge sits down, and it's, it's a very unscientific method. They'll say, okay, this house uses X percent of the road, and they'll go down the line. And they'll divide up the use of the road, and then you take that formula, and you divide up the cost of the maintenance. That's how a judge would deal with that. And, and again, we don't use the road. We use underneath the road. And I think that's an important point. The road is more than adequate for our purposes right now. I mean, I have property that's near the 42-inch main, and that thing is in pretty bad condition. I've, I've walked it before. So we, we don't need a pristine road, in other words, to have a pipeline underneath, underneath the ground. Sub-C, I would encourage you to look at it, because that talks about the process, where you could go to Small Claims Court or Spirit Court. And unfortunately, if you don't have willing neighbors, you kind of have to go through the legal process, and it's a little bit antagonistic, but that sets forth your remedies. And again, the judge would sit down, and this may be an arbitration, where you bring in all the homeowners, and you figure out who's responsible for maintaining. The last, all entertaining questions, but the last comment I had is, Nevada Irrigation District had a similar, it's not the same exact situation, similar, but different. But one possible idea is for the district to, and let me emphasize, this is not a legal requirement, this is something that the board could consider. You could do a low-interest loan, perform the work, purchase the materials, and then you could apportion the cost of the work by agreement amongst the property owners. Now, I don't think, my thought is, you ought not to consider that today. You ought to instruct Mrs. K.
L.K.
Mrs. K. to bring in her property owners as a group and make a proposal to this board. Says, we're as a group, we're willing to pay 100% of what it costs to fix the road to a standard that we find satisfactory. And we would propose you, district, fund the work and give us a low-interest loan that we could pay it off over a period of 10 years. It's an idea, an idea for you, for me. So, that's my thoughts.
I'm giving this quite a bit of thought because of looking at it. Yeah, just as a side note- Yeah, just as a side note, my wife and I were married at the Craig Memorial Church 58 years ago. And when I drove back to look at this road, that's the first time I've been that far back. And if I was in George's position, I would move, and using counsel's advice, I would also move to deny this request myself. But as a board of director or as a board member, our constituents have to have something. And I like your idea of the last, because I've been involved in some road agreements, and even though every place on that road is a redder, if the redder does know it, then somebody does, and they're responsible for it. They really are. You know, you have a heck of a time dragging them out and doing that. I'm on a road agreement right now, and we don't have a low-interest road, so that's what we, you, I'd need to do. So what I would like to do, even though I would agree with George on this, I'd like to table this until we have a further look at it, for the favor of our constituents. But I think our management is taking the right approach, both counsel and the general manager on this, but I think we should take a leather, a further look at it.
Property owners.
Because we got a whole bunch of these pieces of property that could come back and haunt us. We need to solve this problem for maybe all of them, if we can.
I'm not sure what you mean, table it and look at it how?
Further review.
Maybe table it.
Because we, we already have a clear legal description.
It's one possible thing. I like his last deal. I was trying to come up with something, but you have to get, all of the owners of the road are the bulk of them, you know? But they're responsible for their property. Just as you say you're responsible for this road, they're responsible for their property. Even they may never have looked at it, you know? It had a redder in it all the time.
Had you seen this?
Who's going to police that?
Huh?
Not, not us.
Not us.
Had you seen this?
Don't be rude. I asked if I could speak and get through it before anybody had questions. And I feel like you would be very rude to me. This is serious to me.
Yes, and we need to be able to understand what it is you're communicating. For example, when you first started off, you started off exactly wrong. You said that PID, um, had easements, that you had deeds showing that PID was given easements.
Oh, yeah. I don't want to...
No, listen, you, you had it wrong in the English language. PID did not receive easements. PID allowed easements. Those are two different things.
I'm not an attorney.
Mrs. K.
I don't speak.
But that's why we needed to interrupt and find out where we were going with that.
You didn't wait until I said...
Mrs. K., the only reason I wanted to speak before, I wanted you to know that I had been back there and following up on one of the constituents, who were not mentioning his name, Trevor. I just wanted you to be aware of that. And then I emphasized, that's the only reason I wanted to speak before you did.
I think we've all been back there the night that, when this came out in the agenda that Friday. I know that was the first place, actually, I drove on the way home that night, because I hadn't been back on Shady Lane in 20 years. I used to have a friend that lived back in there, but it's been 20-plus years since I've been back in there. I wanted to ask, the civil code that Dustin brought, had you seen that before today? Had you seen anything with that?
No, but he had the problem.
Okay, so, and I think what Doug's asking, are you willing to explore this option, not option C, but the subsection C, I guess is what you would say, and be clearly defined that we are not in charge of maintaining the road? But that C, his option of the low-interest loan, if you could get together the owners, are you willing to explore that?
You know, that would be my next step, is I need to write to these people, but again, I'm telling you, these quarters of these people, they don't have a letter in here anymore.
Well, I think...
Like, they're collecting rent.
I think what Dustin's, ultimately, if they're not willing to participate in the division of this, ultimately, they can be made to participate.
Your remedy is legal process.
Yeah, that, that if they don't want to participate, you know, willingly, and just say, okay, I'm willing to, you know, take a 10-year, participate in the 10-year loan. You said there's close to 50 homes back there. I'm not, I'm not sure, maybe there's that many, but there's...
Not on the other side of the culvert, but...
Yeah, yeah, they're on the whole Shady Holly, Oak.
I don't want to start Shady Lane total.
Exactly, so, I would...
I think it's best, you don't need everybody, you just need enough owners to agree that those owners will cover 100% of the cost. And I would urge the board, I would urge you to go through that legwork, hopefully get a critical mass of owners, and then make a proposal to the board along those lines. And I'm just making this up, the board hasn't heard this before today, but I thought 10 years, low-interest loan, you know, maybe there's some expertise that the district could offer that may save you a little money compared to a private contractor. I don't know, but...
If a proper road was put in, 10 years should more than be sufficient, you know? And the maintenance, the problem with that road, I think, is it's never been a proper road, ever.
It just has it...
It was some blacktop over some gravel, and that was the extent it...
You spots and you bought it all the time.
A proper road needs to be put in.
Case, case in point, pardon me, go ahead. Case in point on this letter that I shouldn't have mentioned the name on, one of the programs, person mentions on here, which would be some help to you. I'm still able and willing to do some, or a lot of the road work with some expert advice that he talks about here with, you know? And so I would, I would be surprised that he would not help you gather up the property owners. And that's what you have to do. I've done that on a couple of other things, and, you know, they're all on the tax rolls and public information.
Bill?
I'd, I'd like to put, make some perspectives out of this. We're talking $15,000 to $20,000. That's not enough to buy a late-model used pickup. If we put it up to, say, $40,000, I counted, and I don't know my count's exactly accurate, but it looks like about 15 landowners use the road. They have no other, in other words, they have access, and it looks like that's their only access to it. So my deal would be that we put this off, table it, whatever you do, to let her, give her, you'll have over a month, because we're having an orderly meeting this month, and to contact those people involved, the landowners. And you can go down to the county and get that information, and they...
I already have it.
You already have it, okay. And, and write your letter and see if you can get a response. And tell, maybe suggest that you tell them it's $40,000, and that we may or may not consider a small loan to help with it, what they'd have to pay back off over a period of whatever time.
Now, are you talking about putting in a whole new road from...
No, no, I'm talking about...
Fixing merely cul, that's what I was...
Fixing the culvert, and George says that's only materials that he's estimated, so if you put in the labor and machine costs and everything else, you're probably talking double what he's put down here. So, if...
So you're talking about $40,000 for...
A culvert.
A culvert that's only 10, maybe 14,000 is possible.
Yes, that's what it is, and the 14 people will, they, that's the cheapest way you can get the fire engine in, and that's the most important thing you've brought up, because the rest of it, who is getting those engines in for they can be there for emergency services and fire. And that, to me, is the most important issue here. I've been over some terrible roads in this town, but you could still get an engine over them because there was no culvert problem. And I've also been involved with the Butte County Resource Conservation District, and they finally have got the BLM that's going to fix the bridge that they lowered the weight limit on it over, up, I can't think the name of the road, anyway, from five tons to three tons, and as soon as they did that, no more fire engines. In their case, it's a 20-mile getting around, and now the BLM, who's the owner of the bridge, is going to replace it. Now, because of the fire problem. So I think we're sort of stuck with something similar. This is public safety. That's the most important thing of it. It may be 40,000. Tell, tell your people whatever you need to do and see if they'll support, you know, Dustin's idea, and the board still has to approve it, it's nothing down, and then come back to us when you, when you're ready. Other words, you may not get replies in 30 days, but when you ask George or ask Larry to put it on the agenda, and we'll, we'll visit again. I'd like to table this for now. I think we've spent enough time on it.
I don't think we need to table it.
I don't either.
Because she can always bring back this different process.
What we're just doing is denying her, her appeal. We're not saying, don't come back.
I move to deny the request of assistance with culvert repair on East Oak and Shady Lane.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes.
I just want, yeah, okay, I want to say that, too, that what, I hope you understand what the lawyer is saying, because it's going, you're going to have to form some sort of an association or something with these people and get them, and the majority of them, to agree to it. And then we're, I think, with this board is willing to work with you on it, but we don't want to set a precedence for the other people, people either that might be involved that the other five miles of, of roads and everything. The problem is, I think that there is somewhere a maintenance with the county...
Yeah.
Which probably went over to the town. So technically, the town probably might get involved.
I was going to emphasize that again. It would be very strange if that development occurred and there was not some kind of road maintenance agreement. Because the development occurred before the town incorporated, it would have been with the county. And we couldn't invest the money and staff resources in going down to the county records department and searching the grantee, grantee, grantor index, but that's something you could do. And what you'd be looking for, it's called a road maintenance agreement. It's very standard. It would have been with the original developer, or maybe even the landowners, and the county. And then, when the town incorporated, I assume, I don't know this, but I assume there was some provision in the incorporation documents that dealt with, okay, the town is now assuming the county's road maintenance obligations. So that's another idea to look at.
The only problem...
Which I think answered your original question of, how is, how is Nunley or Academy Drive paved and who's paving it? It was picked up, it was picked up at the time the town incorporated.
Now, unfortunately, I was on the town council, and as I recall, the town has a deal that they don't want, they won't touch private roads. Now, Academy is not a private road. I think that's why they're doing Academy.
Well, PID owns a section of it, so that section is a private road.
Right, but I'm saying that...
No, it's actually public.
It's public.
Is it a public road?
It's publicly owned.
If it's a public road, then you're okay, but if it's a private road...
No, I'm just saying PID's public.
It's a public agency.
Oh, okay.
They wouldn't have gone through the effort to do anything with that portion of the deed.
Right.
It wasn't worth it.
Okay.
I would also point out, if you can find out when this four parcel split was approved, either at the county or town level, because for them to allow a parcel split with this culvert in the condition it is and the road, I can't believe this four parcel split could have occurred without some type of road maintenance agreement. The county, the county does not allow splits like that without some type of agreement, and so that might be a place to look, too. That particular...
It's like they're all undersized parcels, too.
Mrs. Klumvet, I would also emphasize that, in hearing what Director Kellogg said, I would emphasize, looking at this in a larger picture, to fix the entire road, Holly, Shady, Oak, and have a complete assessment done or an estimate done by one of the paving companies for the full amount, to take care, repair the culvert, and repave that road. Because I don't believe, ultimately, you're still going to be out there filling chuck holes with gravel, and people are going to throw pieces of cement in the holes and so forth like that, because you're...
I don't know, I think I'm at the point where I think they're just going to sell it and get my losses.
Yeah, you're, you're loaded. If you decide to go forward, and that, I hope that is not the option that you, you follow, but I would look at getting all the property owners for a full repave on there, because then you have a road...
Who's the people on Holly?
Then, well, I think, I don't know what condition Holly's in. I didn't drive up Holly.
And we don't find records of us owning Holly.
Yeah, they've highlighted it there, but I think that was...
So they just have easement to get Holly over...
Oh.
Yes.
Exactly. And I think George was highlighting that because of the parcel split, he was just trying to show you there, there's lots two, lot three, and then that would have, I would assume, have been four and maybe five or whatever the heck it was, or maybe it was all one lot. Maybe that was three.
It was this whole section, from here to here to here, down.
But I mean, as you look at these parcels in here and the, the numbers on them, and you can see, anyway, but I would advise maybe getting a full.
Thank you for talking about that.
We, we own actually Oak and Shady Lane.
Yes.
All right. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those against it?
No.
So, okay, it passes 3-2. Okay, new business. PID rules and regulations, policy manual, action may be taken. Who's going to tell us? Is this committee?
Actually, I can cut this short. We didn't have a full committee, and our recommendation is to take it back to committee. The current discussion was, as far as penalties occurs, is the moving to a 30-day billing cycle and have penalties implemented after 30 days at a much lower percentage than the current 10%. We haven't discussed a percentage, but all we are looking for today, being on the agenda, is if the board wants to give the committee input into their thoughts on the 30-day percentage or whatever, they can take that back to the committee and bring a full proposal in January.
What I would like is whatever we had before, we went from every two-month billing to one month, that they get the same length of time to do it without penalties. That's what I would like to see.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure...
You're talking 60 days.
That, that actually won't work.
Why?
The computer system won't, it's...
Well, we could, we could do it. That would just be a long period of time that people would have outstanding debt.
It's what we had before.
Well, it, what's, it's, well, okay, we'll take that into consideration.
Yeah, it, I just think that's what we sort of sold this thing on, was, hey, we're going to bill every month, but you still just have the same amount of time to pay it without penalties.
Well, we didn't, we didn't, we, we...
Well, that's what I told my constituents.
Okay. I didn't, I wasn't trying to sell, sell it, sell it to say that. But what, just a reminder, before our automated meter reading system, we were reading meters 20, 20 days a month?
A month, yeah.
And so each time you would bill, you would get a read, you would bill, you would get a read, you would bill, you'd get a read, you'd get billed. So, these people had multiple, we had multiple levels of billings going out, 20 levels of billings going out per month. And we, and the way the policy has been written and we've been, and going by it, is that your bill date, your, your billing cycle starts on the date of the read or the end read. With the new system, we're reading all the bills on the first, or all the meters on the first, but not all the bills are going out on the first. They're going out later, like on the 15th or the 20th, but your time starts when your meter's read, which is the first. So we've kind of gotten away from how we've done things in the past, and it's creating problems, because your clock starts ticking before you even have the bill in your hand. So what our thought is, is to go to more of a traditional type of billing system, meaning your clock starts ticking when the bill is printed.
That'll, that'll be, that'll be the same as what I want.
Yeah, because if they're proposed, they're going to have 45 to 50 days from read date to pay their bill.
Right, so that goes along with what I want.
Right, so there, there's not going to be much change of expansion of time, other than that's going to be very clear on when your due, when your bill is due, when the clock started ticking, and we'll be able to notify the customers of exact dates and times of when they're due.
Now, there's one utility company, I forget which one it is, that they say, if you pay it by this date, it's this, if you don't, it's that. Could we do that?
Yeah.
You know, that really makes people pay things faster.
I know, that the problem is, is the more information, it seems like, well, we got, we got public input from one person, but from the public input, it sounded like, keep it simple. Tell me what I owe, tell me when it's due, that's all I want to know. Basically, make that very clear to them. Yeah, put all the other information on there that we were looking at, but tell them what I owe, tell them when it's due, and that's basically...
And when the penalty will be assessed.
That's right.
Yeah, and it's really difficult to have that, what it would be after the penalty, because if it's into the second month, then there's shut-off fees and there's all kinds of things you don't have to tell them.
Well, I know, but this is, no, this just says, I forget, I think it's, is it AT&amp;T? They say, "If paid by December tenth, it's this amount; if paid after, it is this amount."
That's the tack, county tax collector.
No, no, that is also one of the utility companies. And I like it because what it does is I say, "Okay, then it's got to be paid by this date because I don't want to pay that bigger figure." To me, that's as simple as possible. You get it into me before this date and we're okay.
But the problem is, that's not the truth though, because if you don't pay the AT&amp;T bill for nine months, I can guarantee you that there's going to be more charges on there, interest charges, collection expenses. They'll add additional charges.
Yeah, but it says if, yeah.
But you, see, you said, "Pay this or pay that." That's not true because if you don't pay that until nine months later-
Yeah, but then the next month, you'll get another bill that'll even, that'll update it.
Okay, well, then that becomes very complex then.
Every month you get it updated. Yeah, every month it gets updated.
To me, to me, the more, the more calculations we're trained to put onto a bill, the more complicated it puts on us, and then the more questions we're getting constantly from the customers.
Just, it just looks simple to me, but that's okay.
I think that, I'll go with Larry, whatever's simple for the customer, if it costs more work to you, Kevin, that's what we pay you for, but let's make it as simple as we can to the customer before we have the fewest amounts of complaints.
Well, what we're looking at is simple.
That's what we're trying to do.
It's actually, Kevin's saying he wants it to keep it simple because the more convoluted it becomes, the harder it is for the customers to understand, the more phone calls we get. So, yes, having a date that it is due and the penalty will be assessed here.
But is it going to tell, you're going to tell them the penalty, what the penalty is?
Yes, we will have the penalty on there.
Percentage.
Yes.
Not a dollar.
Percentage of balance.
Yeah, okay.
It does on the back. Ten percent of penalty will be assessed. That's what it says on the back of the bill.
Currently. We're talking about a lower percentage.
You see, what they do, this, this utility company that I have, if you pay it after that date, then you have to, you're supposed to send in the other amount.
The thing is though, our bill will be then, if, if they're not due, if they don't pay it by the due date, then the bill will be printed the next day, and then that bill will have the penalty on that previous balance already calculated for them, which they shall receive within four or five days of that print.
Okay, well, then we'll just, we're not going to take any action on this.
Just an update.
Just an update. Okay.
Kevin's going to do some more looking at it.
Right, okay.
I stole my thunder.
Do we need a board recess?
No.
Okay. Treasurer's report.
I have my memo.
Go ahead.
Let me get to it real quick. Yep. Cash balances has not varied much since last month. The highlights are the corporation yard, we're continuing to, to finish up the corporation yard, the, well, process recycle water project, and we're still trying to, I don't think we've gotten word on the state revolving fund application for, for funding. We have received a portion of our grant reimbursement from the state of California. One of them, we had issued a invoice, I think in February, and we just received payments last week, so they're not the quickest on turnaround of, of those grant funds. So, that's it. Is there any questions?
It seems the balance is going down, right? Because I think I remember five-
Yeah, I mean, from a couple of years, or like last year this time, yeah, it's gone down due to the fact that we're absorbing it through the corporation yard, we're absorbing a lot of the reserves through the corporation yard.
Right. And is there any, is there any date that you can tell us when we're going to have to do a two-eighteen?
Right now, we are, if you remember the budget, the budget had us out at least two or three years. We're good on operations. It just comes down to capital projects and what the board decides to do on capital projects for this budget year, we're good. If you guys were to approve a project of process recycle project, you're going to have to do a two-eighteen immediately to go out and get financing to do that project, so.
We'll start that discussion with the board as soon as we get the final report shown to you and our project selected that we're going to go forward with.
Right, okay. Any other questions of treasurer?
I move to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? We lost our public. She was a little upset. Yeah, I don't know why, but I think it's frustrating to her, yeah. But anyway, we try. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report. Oh, treasurer's report? Yeah. It's the rubber stamped one, right? Yeah, I'll say aye. Aye, okay, five-zero. Okay, approval of November checks. We'll start with Mr. Flesher.
Doug, I got to go, guys. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Dustin. Yeah. Where's our candy? Where's our candy from? Oh, right there. From Dustin. Oh. I think he'd probably tell you that he can't give you anything.
I don't need much.
Don't we support him? Doesn't matter. Yep.
Thank you for your assistance, Dustin.
Yes, very much.
Thank you for your service in 2013.
Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year if not.
Very much appreciated.
I think looking at his bills, he's going to have a Merry Christmas.
He doesn't do it all. Very much appreciated your service this last year.
Have you guys gone ice skating?
No, we're planning, we're hopefully New Year's, around New Year's.
Okay, do you have any questions?
Well, again, I'd like to compliment Kevin on the added page up here on the front, which is part of his report, the contracts that he have out, I'll talk about those later, but not today. And I like the way that it's laid out. I have a much better handle on it now, where we start the vendor, they're all there together, and so I have no comments on it.
Okay, no comments on the checks?
No.
Okay.
I have a question or two.
Mr. Hunt?
iPad page eighty-four, Department of Transportation, this utility agreement, twenty-four hundred dollars. What was that for?
What kind of agreement was it?
It says utility agreement deposit, Department of Transportation.
Yeah, that was for our, the valve can raising on the paving project down Clark Road.
Oh, at Pearson and Clark?
Pearson and Clark, all the way down through the town limits out. There was some, Neil did a good job, glad I can remind you. We had prior rights on some of them because we've been here forever, so he actually worked with them, and about half, we would have paid double that if he hadn't gone through that effort of figuring out which one we had prior rights, which means they have the responsibility to raise it at their expense versus ones that-
Good for Neil.
Kudos to Neil.
So, that's what that is for.
Great.
I'm looking for my next one on iPad page ninety-one, Standard Insurance Company for October and November. What, what insurance do we buy there that we pay on a monthly basis?
It's long-term, it's long-term disability insurance for employees.
Oh, it's just the payroll stuff.
Yep.
Sorry. And that's it.
That's it, okay. Sepp?
I had all my questions answered already, so I'm good.
Okay. Bill?
I didn't get this earlier, and I'd like to ask about it. It on, I forget who the vendor was, it got the asphalt, not the asphalt, the rock, and there was four vendors, but three didn't quote, didn't answer, didn't quote or make a bid at all, we just had one, one bid. And did they give any reasons why they didn't want to bid on our, on our business or something?
Most of them, I talked to Keith about that. There's times when we need multiple trucks, some of them can't handle it, and some of them, we gave them an option and they don't have trucks, but we wanted to allow them to bid in case they wanted to have an arrangement with a private, and they didn't bid as well. So, basically, they had reasons why they, they didn't think they could fulfill their end of the, of our needs.
Okay.
But two of the materials, the price didn't, didn't even increase from this current year, the first two materials and the, the one that was the outside rock or whatever, that one went up a little bit.
That was Northgate?
Hmm?
Was that Northgate that was awarded?
Yeah, yeah, Rock Yard.
Our state aggregate.
Yeah.
Anything?
I'm sorry, I've been so busy. I am looking at the check register, so.
Okay, then I'll go with mine. You got most of mine. The one about Frank's Refrigeration?
Yeah.
On page eighty-five, it's not very much money, but the code, is that the code for the corporate building?
Yeah, so nine-oh, if you see, oh-nine-oh-one-B, means building. Oh-nine-oh-one-Y means yard.
Yard, okay. I knew, I hadn't seen the B before.
Yeah.
Okay, so B for building, right, okay. Let's see, the other one, let's see, this was vendor, General Chemical. Is this the thing that we're trying to get rid of? The aluminum, it's on the same page down at the bottom?
Same page, okay.
What was it, eighty-five, eighty-four?
Yeah, very bottom. It's aluminum sulfate. Very, very bottom.
Aluminum sulfate. That's what we're trying to, is that the stuff that gets in the water that we have to get rid of before we can put it back in the creek? Aluminum sulfate?
Yeah, so we're not getting rid of that chemical. We want to keep it because it works good.
Yeah, I know, but we, but they won't let us, but they won't let us put it back into the water, okay.
Well, actually, as I understand it, that's the chemical that we use as part of the treatment process. We have to add that chemical, the phosphate into it.
But they won't let us put it back in the creek.
There's a little, there's a little bit of it that we pop up on the hill.
Right.
And we have that. I like, we can have a thousand parts and we have one part or something like that.
Okay, they-
Put up on the hill.
There's a whole-
Jim was the one that was telling me about it.
Okay, on page eighty-six, we're renting from, uh, who is it? Ner, yeah. Mer, what is that?
The Hertz rental equipment?
Yeah, it's a big figure.
We've, I know we've rented man, man lifts from them.
We've rented man lifts, we've rented a roller. We needed a larger roller for the corporation yard. We rented a float tractor to float all the material around because much more efficient than our loader. Um, that's about all I can think of.
They give us just unbelievable rates though.
Right.
And I don't think they charge us-
And nothing that we should buy ourselves.
Oh, no.
Right.
Not for the one we use.
Right, okay. Page eighty-nine, Office Depot. I was curious, why, why does it jump back and forth on the dates?
Oh, on the check?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Probably some were billing but received on a date.
Yeah, but they're all, it's two checks in the-
Credit, the thirty-two sixty-nine.
Yeah, must have been when it was inputted into this, input into the system. I don't know why, but they're all, you can see that they're all on that check.
Two checks. Eleven-twenty-seven on eleven-thirteen. I was just curious.
No.
The other one seemed to go in order, that one didn't.
There's some other sort deal going on in there.
I don't know why, why it would jump back and forth like that.
Okay, you didn't know either. I was, I was curious. Okay, that's all I have. I entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept the November checks as presented and consider the approval of a general fund check number, excuse me, the general check number, four-five-six-three-five through four-five-seven-six-two, and authorize a similar amount, allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of December. Correct?
Right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes five-oh. Director's comments?
Go ahead.
Doug?
Enjoyed my first year on the board, and wish everybody a very happy holiday, a Merry Christmas, and a New Year. We're going to have a great two-fourteen, twenty-fourteen.
Going to have a wet march.
Even if it doesn't rain, it'll still be good, but it'll-
We're going to have a wet march.
It'll make us think.
What do they call that that year, the miracle storm?
Yeah.
I do have a comment this time. The only, first of all, the only way we may have a wet march is if we hose ourselves down, get in the line and march down.
He must not have lived here when that happened.
I would like to make a comment. Elected board members represent the public at large. This is about thirty thousand persons in our district. Listening to the public for their opinions must be done with caution. We as directors must evaluate all input, most certainly, but then we must be able to make our decisions, not on just the verbal arguments of a very minuscule portion of our constituents, but rather make decisions for the best interest of the district. I'm concerned with some of the comments I hear about, well, I've heard from my constituents and the majority of them want this, and that's what I'm going to recommend. I do not believe that's our job, and I wanted to bring that up for reflection and consideration. You know, every director is going to make their own way along in handling the district's business, but I think that ultimately, sometimes, we're going to have to make decisions that go against what the majority of this very small, minuscule minority are telling us to do. And that's my comment.
Sepp?
My director's comment is somewhat along the same lines in reading the editorial that was in The Post on Saturday the seventh. I would once again caution the directors in the ways they bring up items before the board with a lot of discussion in the public before it's brought to the board. We really should have first rights at hearing what the topic is before it's discussed, brought to a head in the public. And I would caution, that, that article was a caution from our constituents that maybe we're doing this the wrong way and we need to look at it a different way. I think that all items need to be looked at. We should be thorough, make sure we're not discarding anything, but maybe a little Q and A behind the scenes is necessary before it is brought out into the public eye because a lot of times it seems these items are quelled. Once we've brought them to a major head, then we find them here in our lap as a board,